I want to call the June 19th, 2025 O'Fallon City Council Workshop to order a roll call. Katie?
Mayor Hennessy?
Present.
Councilmember Wexler?
Present.
Councilmember Roth?
Present.
Councilmember Boyer?
Present.
Councilmember Thompson?
Excused.
Councilmember Bib?
Present.
Councilmember Cuskella?
Present.
Councilmember Kewen?
Present.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Present.
All right, folks, you have a gin in front of you. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve for Ragsdale.
Second, Bib.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second by Councilwoman Bib. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything on the agenda that you folks want to talk about? Seeing none, motion is second to approve the council workshop minutes of May 22nd, 2025.
Motion to approve Wexler.
Second, Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Wexler, second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Questions? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. First, second on the workshop is strategic plan update. Mr. DeBelle.
Good evening, Mayor of the City Council. Thank you. For those of you here who are new, let me just give you a real quick update of what I'm doing. Back in summer of 2023, city staff and the city council worked together to develop a two-year strategic plan that we have been working on since that time. The plan was actually designed to run through just about now, basically mid-year 2025, to get us through the next election that we had scheduled where you all join the council. We will then be working with you in the near future on developing the next step in our strategic plan. What this is tonight, I've had the pleasure of coming about every quarter and giving an update on where we stand with those outstanding items on our previous strategic plan. So that's all I'm going to go through tonight. If any of you would like more detail on things that we've accomplished, want to talk through all the past, I'd be happy to schedule time with you to do that later on. But for tonight, we have a few outstanding items, most of which are either complete or have been kind of held back for reasons beyond our control, but I just want to give you an update of what they are. We had a convenience fee report and direction. Finance is working on this and they are going to present to the council in the near future, but they need to see the impact of the Tyler payment system to know how it's going to affect the convenience fees and how we can do that. So as soon as they are able to assess that, they'll come back to you with the proposed fee changes. Utility billing through munis, that is complete. Our residents are on the new utility billing system. I know you guys heard some of those things about that. There's still some backend things that we're cleaning up on our side, but the system's in and it's working. Economic development is working on a final draft of a revised incentive policy for presentation in a future workshop, so that'll be coming to you in the near future. Institute mobile ticketing for code enforcement. We have a contract with Digiticket, which is the same software that the police department uses, and implementation should be complete by the end of July. We continue to work on improving our technology documentation, specifically in IT, obviously, but also in engineering. So that's kind of an ongoing effort we've been doing throughout these two years. Those continue. We've made a lot of progress with it, but it really is something that we'll always be doing now from here on out. But also, the other piece of that is we are transitioning our GIS system to the cloud. That process is ongoing right now, so hopefully we'll get that completed in the near future. On the HR side of things, we've been, HR has been working with the police department about bringing forward a mental health and wellness coordinator for the O'Fallon Police Department. We have that position offered, working on finalizing the contract, and we expect that person to start in third quarter of this year. Preparing for the next citywide compensation study, we do have a consultant hired. It's Higbee and Associates who did our previous one. They are hired. We begin our preparation meetings with them. Their work really will begin in earnest here in just about a couple of weeks. The goal is to have something that we can present to you for the October budget meetings that go in the budget for January 2026. We completed the transition to single-stream recycling. That's been working fantastically. Everything's going well. Very few hiccups on that overall, which was just a credit to staff's great work on that. Establishing an alternative court was one. That's something that has become probably a little bigger than any of us thought initially. Right now, we're monitoring what some other cities are doing, trying to watch that and see if it's, see how they're working it and see if it's something that we can bring here to O'Fallon in the future. Communications has created a new style guide for the city. That was something that they were working on. It's done, just not, it's being, it'll be printed any day now, so you'll have that shortly to you. Our law enforcement training center, you all know where we are with that. The range is complete. It opened in March. Final plans for the entire complex are expected in third quarter 2025 with completion for the construction in 2026. And then we have a couple of items that were related to path and sidewalk development throughout the city. The city staff continues to work on revising our, possibly revising our standards for sidewalk development in the future, but more importantly, we've really been working with GRG on bringing, Gateway Greenway, sorry, bringing forward expanded paths throughout the area. We have two big projects, one that's going to start here this summer. It's a MoDOT project to bring the connector over the bridge on Technology Road. And then hopefully next year, 2026, 2027, we'll begin work on the connection between Sports Park and Barrett, Barrett Haven. So that's in partnership with GRG and the county on those. And then we continue to look at opportunities for future development with that, too. Public Works Facility, you guys, most of you were at the groundbreaking for that. Construction has already begun. If you haven't driven by lately, you should. It's, lots happened. The water treatment plant filter rehabilitation, that project was completed earlier this year. It was the project that never ended, but it did end. And alluvial, alluvial well six development, construction's about 50% complete. Chloramine additions to deep wells three, four, and six. The design is about 90% complete with a goal of budgeting that in future years. The wastewater treatment plant headworks project is about 75% complete. I know a lot of you saw that when you went on the O'Fallon 101 tour recently. Upgrading the lighting at CarShield Field and at Ozzy Sports to LED. CarShield Field, the lighting is complete. If you haven't been out there, it makes a huge difference to the stadium. We're in the process of making those changes to Ozzy, about halfway done at Ozzy, so that'll be done later this summer. And we also are working on installing, we've completed the installation of security cameras at both Ozzy and Civic Park. Still trying to figure away how to get it through Sports Park with the poor internet connections down there, but we're working on that. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions for Tom. Debbie?
Thank you, Mayor. You were talking about the security cameras. How about security cameras at Westoff? Have we worked anywhere?
We have a pretty significant network at Westoff right now. We continue to, Bill could probably talk a little more if he wants, but we continue to tweak kind of the layout based on some of the issues that we've seen in the past and make sure that we've got it covered. But we have a pretty significant network there now, and the police department has used it successfully in several cases.
Okay, great. Bill, the bathrooms and stuff are all being monitored, because in the past, there's always been so much vandalism in the bathrooms there at Westoff by the pickleball courts?
Yes. So we have, I believe, like 22 cameras in Westoff. So it's completed skate park, Brendan's, all the ball fields, both restrooms, the maintenance building, the shops, everything, so.
Anybody else? Amanda?
You mentioned a compensation study. Can you tell me a bit about that?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Periodically, the city does compensation studies to compare city staff salaries to our comparable cities to make sure we're paying our employees competitively and that we don't fall behind in being able to attract good talent. So that's what, that's what we'll be beginning here. We've already started for 2026.
Anything else? Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you all.
Next is the fiscal year 2026 budget kickoff. And for our new council members and our old ones, please understand that the budget kickoff discussion is a chance for you to share with staff those items that you would like to see explored for possible inclusion in the budget that is presented to council in October. Your wish list items will spur staff to investigate those items and their potential cost as well as perhaps lead to a workshop presentations and discussions between now and October to clarify or further identify what you're looking for. Tonight's meeting is not the time for debate or deep discussion regarding your wish list items. So basically, this is just the time, this is what you guys want to see in the budget. Okay? So with that, Ms. Ragsdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I would love to be able to see Veterans Memorial include Space Force now that that's one of our new additions to our armed forces.
Anything else?
That's all I can think of now. I'm sure, I'm sure that whatever I have in mind will be covered by everybody else.
Okay. Mr. Cuskella.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd really love to see city staff work to improve the budget for concrete replacement and to potentially be on a system where we are increasing that by half each year consecutively until it's at least tripled. There's quite a few slabs in the Ward Three area, Ward Four area that won't get back around to with the circuit that we're on that weren't able to get done. I'd love to see more of those be able to get replaced.
Anything else?
The lights at Ozzy are awesome.
Yes, they are. That it, sir? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to put on my wish list again, a dog park. Would love to see a dog park in our city. For the city of our size, needs a dog park. And we have land, so we need a place. I've already talked to the Parks Department, so hopefully they will work with me to get a dog park. And the other thing I'd like to see is the bike trail between Highway K up Highway N toward Cotville. There is just a small stretch from K up to about the Presbyterian Church that is not finished. It's, it's us. And then it starts Cotville or County. And I would love to see that stretch finished because they have a beautiful bike path and it just dead ends. So I would love to see that, because that would hook up to the trails on Highway K. It would really give a completion. So I'd like to see the money allocated to see if we can get that trail finished and a dog park. Thank you.
Mr. Bib?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I take one off the list real quick?
Whatever you want to do.
Linda, you'll be happy to hear that at the last OCVB meeting, there was a, I think it was $5,000, was approved to do the design for space, whatever it's called for military.
Space Force.
Space Force, and great. Now I have nothing. Thanks.
No, it's just staff's completing things so fast, we just can't even get through the meeting before it's already done. Say, I kind of reiterate the same thing that Cuskella said with roads, but also to Debbie's point, a connection I'd like to see for pedestrian to stay focused on is the Bush Connector. I know they're working through, yeah, the north side of 40 to get over to Bush, but to continue that from that section through Bush to connect to Caldonia to ideally get, get down through O'Day Park to keep O'Day being more accessible by pedestrian foot traffic versus having to drive there would be great. And then also, DeBelle mentioned doing compensation study for us with the budget, but just try to emphasize that pay also isn't the only thing that drives employees to the company that I run. Keeping the environment fun, finding other cultural things to keep employees excited about being where they're at. And just encourage every manager to try to find ways to do that, because I do think it's extremely important that we stay competitive in bringing new people on, also competitive in retaining the ones we have and keeping a focus on the upcoming retirements that may be looming.
Okay.
That is it. Thank you, Mayor.
You have them?
Did we mention that we had kittens here recently for employees to pet?
We didn't have any injuries, did we? Okay. Mr. Boyer?
I'd also second the, the construction of the roads, then concrete. And then also the, the relationship and the engagement with Aging Ahead and the Senior Center. How do we make that kind of more what it should be?
Yeah. That it?
That is it.
Mr. Wexler?
I am also going to jump on the Veterans Memorial train. I know during O'Fallon 101, we went over that and there was some damage apparently to those. I'd love to see that get fixed. And then kind of along the compensation trail, I'm not sure where we fall in the loggers, but if there's any way we can maybe up that for employees or anything like that, I don't know what that looks like yet, but.
Go ahead. We are at the highest possible. Now, there are a couple other things we could do beyond just the percentage we're at, and we can explore those and give more information on that.
Yep, that'd be great. That's what I got.
Okay. Mr. Kewen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Benefit of going near the end is a lot of the things that I want have already been mentioned, so I'll just reiterate what, what my ideas are. Certainly the roads is high priority, has been for many years. I know that city staff is constantly working to increase that budget, constantly looking for new and innovative ways to keep our roads in good condition for less cost out of pocket, and I just hope that we continue that. One of the things that I've asked staff to look at, that we will be discussing in a workshop in the not-too-offal distant future, is something that we abandoned some time ago, which is partial depth replacement of concrete with asphalt. And yes, it leaves black stripes in the road, but only until the asphalt starts to fade from the sunlight. It'll save the city a lot of money and keep our roads in good condition. Dubtailing on to that, the pathway, at least in Ward Four, the pathway on the south side of Mexico Road is in poor repair. It's in better repair this year than it was last year. They've gone through and, and knocked down some of the high spots. They cut out some of the trees that were creating the high spots. So kudos for that, but I'd like to see at least a portion of that pathway be improved in, in the next fiscal year, as well as the one on the north side of Fizey Road, particularly as it gets close to Bryan, is in somewhat disrepair. And last but certainly not least is our senior center is an awesome jewel in this city, and unfortunately, it's kind of, I don't want to say falling behind, but I'm getting reports that it's not open five days a week because we have, we lack staff to run it. And those are things that I think we ought to look into, finding a way to keep that senior center open at least five days a week. We have a lot of seniors. Have you ever been up there when it's open? It gets quite busy. The seniors like to use that center. So I'd like to see if there's a possibility that we can find a way to keep that open five days a week. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Roth?
I just want to touch on a couple of things. Hopefully, my voice will hold out for it. Getting back to the Space Force flag, when I was on the Veterans Commission, we talked about this about a year and year and a half ago, there was a few issues with where to place it, and we were working on that. So I think that's going to go through. It's just a matter of time. From what I understand, we just got to find a good place to put it to join in with the other branches. And then on the seniors, I go up and visit them once every other month or so, and yes, the big concern is they were open three days a week. Now we're down to two. So instead of five, I'm going to try to work with three, up to four. I've talked to a few people on how we do this. Seems like a lot of it comes down to funds. So if I can figure out some grants or other funding, I've talked to some state reps that would help out. So I'm trying to work with that, Jeff, see what we can get going. Plus, they want more parking spots. That's on their wish list, though.
Right. Let's shoot for five, and if we only get to four, then so be it.
Sounds like a plan. And that's about all I got, Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Taylor? You're not last.
Thank you. And I'm just happy to hear everybody say roads, because you know, that's what I was going to bring up, roads, road, roads. So that's my big one. I'd like to see it doubled, at least. I would love to see that. I know Mr., or Councilmember Kewen had talked about the asphalt patching that we have come into the workshop, and I don't know if that's going to increase expenditure for the roads or not, change into that, but that's something we should look into if we need to increase that. And he also mentioned the pathway on Fizey. He covered it for me. So, yeah, that's it.
Okay. Mine is always the same, economic development. I know we're at full staff now, and I would really love, I know you guys go out to do the conferences and stuff. I would like to see some, some more businesses come in. I mean, with all the recognitions that the city of O'Fallon is getting, it's, you know, I don't know why they wouldn't want to come. And I know there's places that, you know, it's tough for them because we're losing some spaces and everything else, but just keep up the good work and bring some, and roads is always on my, my wish list for, for the roads. And sorry to hear, but I don't like the dog park. You know how I feel, but that's, as I said.
I'll call Debbie.
Yeah, you call Debbie. So with that, Mr. Snowden, you have anything?
No, sir. Staff will take this list and, and work through it and go from there. I appreciate everyone's input.
Thank you. Mr. Woods? Upcoming planning zoning agenda for two weeks.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm here to go over our July 3rd agenda. And I've got some slides to, to show you on things that are coming up. So July 3rd is our meeting. The first item, we have a public hearing for a new, new building that is Shady Creek. This is conditional use that'll be coming to council for a drive-through restaurant, which is Scooters. And then they have a, a three-bay kind of strip center along with it that's built in. So this is right at the corner of Lake St. Louis Boulevard and Highway N. There's the location map. The Willows Development's kind of surrounding, you know, at least to the south and to the west. There's a couple more lots to the west yet of commercial. That's the property. Here's the building elevations. Scooters would have the, like I said, the drive-through on the one end, but then the, the rest of these, three additional bays are all spec at this point. Just a different view. Here's the site plan. Up along the, the top, this is, yeah, Highway N is up here. So there's kind of a stormwater cleansing. This is Lake St. Louis Boulevard. So this, this is the only entrance. This is the existing road into Willows, and this would be their entrance. But this is all, all just access off of that, off of that drive there. Going down here takes you into the Willows subdivision. That's all I had on, on that one. The next one, we have a conditional use. This is 921 Highway K. This is the old, I always call it the true value, even though it hasn't been that for a long time. I don't know. But we got a new user going in there, contractor services. They want, they're a plumbing and HVAC user, and that requires a conditional use. So this is the property. We are going to try to get them to annex. There's this weird little area that's never been annexed. It's part of the, a parking lot around the back. It's, I've tried to annex that in the past. It's, it was owned by somebody in Texas or something. We could track them down, but now we think there's a new owner and we've talked to them and they want to annex it. So I think we'll be able to clean that up. But there is that little island back there that's unincorporated. But yeah, it's conditional use, and they want to pretty much use the building, and then they want to fence in kind of where the old loading docks are for some storage of equipment. So that'll be coming to city council for conditional use.
Is that, David, is that going to be allowed, outdoor storage?
We've allowed it. It just has to be screened, kind of tucked in there. It's really, that's part of the conditional use. To be honest, that's why it's part, that's why it's a conditional use. So.
But on the conditions, it says it has to be screened?
Yeah. I mean, that's going to be our recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think, I don't know that I have it on here, but it was going to be a side-proof fence.
Okay.
But just, that's why it is. It's not a permitted use. That's why it's going through this process, yeah. The next one is Brock's Tree Service. He just actually got his site done for his building that's out there, and he's ready to come in and build, add on to it. So this is right along the highway, close to Lake St. Louis Boulevard. He pretty much just opened up this part of the building just within the last, I'll say, less than a month ago. He just got that done, so he's ready to do the rest of it. and this is a site, this is a, this existing buildings right there. So this is the new addition for Brock's. It's kind of a blow up of the area. Next one, this is a display plat. So we've seen some construction work, or at least equipment being, getting ready to start going out here. It's the Strawberry Farm project on Mexico. They want to do a display plat, build one display home on their subdivision property. So they'd build the, the road back to this one house. There'd be a parking lot, and there'd be one display. And that requires P and Z approval for that. And this is an item that's, this is just a planning and zoning item, but we've been meeting internally. Back when we adopted the 2021 Conference of Plan, there's a thoroughfare plan in there that proposes, proposes new roads or shows improved improvements to roads that we want to do. So that's, you know, it's four years old. We've been looking at it. There are updates we want to do to it. So this is to come forward with an updated thoroughfare plan. And I know you can't really see that, but this is, this is something we'll have going through here in July also. And the last one is a, this is a subdivision code amendment. This will be coming to council, changing some sewer lateral piping standards. And that's it.
Questions for David? David, on the one for the, is there a reason why they don't use, put the fence in the back of the property on that back parking?
On this one here? Go back where the unincorporated lot we were talking about. Well, I think, I could be wrong, but I don't think they have the whole building. There's a different user down there. So this was, they're, they're kind of doing the north half.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean? So, and I, I looked at this, too, that there's actually no doors or anything back here to get into the building. So, and we can ask them that, but I don't think that's something that they really think would be viable.
Just a question?
Yep.
Anybody else got any questions for David? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items for consideration? Seeing none, like to have a motion go to closed session. 610-0211, legal action, clause of action, or litigation involving a public governmental body or, and any confidential privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representative and its attorneys. 610-0212, leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate. And 610-02112, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened, and sealed proposals and related documents or any documents related to negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected.
So moved, Ragsdale.
Second, Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Wexler. Roll call, Katie?
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook? Councilmember Kewen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wexler?
Yes.
Councilmember Ragsdale? Councilmember Thompson?
She's excused.
Councilmember Cuskella?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Bib?
Yes.
We'll be up in the committee room at 610. I want to call the June 19th, 2025 O'Fallon City Council meeting to order. Roll call, Beth.
Mayor Hennessy?
Present.
Councilmember Wexler?
Present.
Councilmember Roth?
Present.
Councilmember Boyer?
Present.
Councilmember Thompson?
Present.
Councilmember Bib?
Present.
Councilmember Cuskella?
Present.
Councilmember Kewen?
Present.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Present.
Please stand for the invocation by-
Present.
Please stand for the invocation by Police Chaplain Michael Atherton, Senior Pastor of the First Baptist Church of O'Fallon, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Wexler.
Thank you. Let's have a word of prayer together. Father, we come before you tonight and we thank you for this beautiful day you've given to us. We thank you for this beautiful city that we get to call home. Father, tonight, as we, uh, begin to approach the Fourth of July holiday in just a couple of weeks, Father, we thank you for the freedom that we have in this land. Father, we acknowledge, uh, a great deal of unrest throughout the world. We thank you for the relative peace that we get to experience. We thank you for the men and women of our community who work so hard to preserve that peace, for our civic leaders, those who are here tonight, ensuring that this community remains a place of great blessing for everyone who calls it home. Father, we pray tonight that you would give our mayor and this city council great wisdom in all of their dealings. Father, I pray that you would, uh, help them to lead and serve this community with great grace and, uh, and with tremendous diligence. Father, we pray that you watch over us and guide us and guard us. Father, we pray that you would, uh, help us to, uh, help to make this world, day by day, moment by moment, a better place to live. We love you. For the sake of the name, pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, you have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve Ragsdale.
Second, Wexler.
Motion by Councilwoman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Wexler. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. First, I'd like to have a motion to rat my appointment of Sharon Nicholson to serve as a Director to the Waterbury Stormwater CID, fill in the remainder of a non-expired term until December of 2025.
So moved, Cuskella. Second, Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Cuskella, second by Councilman Wexler. Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a video. Gentlemen?
The biggest project to hit the region is locked in, loaded, and ready to go.
The Center for Advanced Skills Training in Law Enforcement, affectionately known as Castle, is what we're going to call it moving forward.
It's a collaboration between O'Fallon and St. Charles for our first responders.
In this region, we hope to provide the highest quality law enforcement training to not only our neighboring municipalities, but the entire Midwest region and the country. This center will be a one-stop shop when it bargains to send their officers to, and will no longer have to be sent to numerous areas and locations to receive the training. Our mission is to empower law enforcement and public safety professionals with the knowledge, skills, and tools necessary to excel in the 21st century.
We also welcome the Eastern Missouri Police Academy, who will relocate to Castle upon its opening to make use of its state-of-the-art facilities.
Once completed, this facility will house not only the shooting range we see today, but also a one-mile Conhercy D-Val operations force, a two-story, 11,000-square-foot semi-mission house, a canine obstacle course and training area, a SWAT training area to include a school bus and fuselage, a drone training area, and a training center comprised of seven classrooms and a personal training range.
This is absolutely tremendous. This is just a reflection of the great partnership that we have with O'Fallon, working well with our state senators, our state reps, working to support us on this. It has been a phenomenal showing. It's a phenomenal facility. It's going to implement for the, the whole community and the whole region. It's going to be a great benefit to everyone. It's, it truly is awesome to be seeing this.
Yeah, and not just the region at large, but for policing in general, right? Like, we're moving into the new era of policing with the training we're going to offer out here, which is going to benefit the officers, the residents, and the region itself.
With phase one done and more to come, this unique training center will bring in a new era of teamwork and create a stronger, united front against the crime that plagues our cities.
Uh, it's been a long time coming to get to this point. This is very exciting to see, uh, this phase one B portion, uh, coming into, uh, you know, being used, used every day. And I know our cops are really excited about it, and I'm very excited about it and proud to be part of this.
And with a new era brings new possibilities, and that is what Castle is here to represent.
Uh, my gratitude to you all. Nothing makes me prouder, so, here, St. Charles, to be able to say we're safe. So thank you for today. This is going to be an amazing project, and, uh, your contributions and support are much appreciated. Thank you.
Less than a year ago, we were gathered here to break ground on this monumental endeavor. Today, I'm proud to stand with you as we officially open the first phase of this state-of-the-art training center. Our accomplishment here today will, will benefit everyone for generations to come, not just O'Fallon, but the entire region.
We are proud to show off the first phase and excited to see the completion of Castle, where the citizen's safety is the number one priority.
Great job, guys. That brings us to citizens' comments. I have one speaker, Mr. Deenoff.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deenoff, city public advocate. The first issue on my agenda for tonight is the appointment of Sharon Nicholson. Number one, is she a resident of the Waterbury neighborhood, or does she come from outside of our community or represent, uh, a developer, some outside special interest group? Also comes into question is the voting record of a lot of these appointees. A lot of them either don't, don't show up to the polls in municipal elections or other elections, and I think that they need to be part of our community and part of our solutions. So those are my two questions right there. Buried Resolution A, what are the benefits, if any, of the crack seal program in the amount of $415,000? Um, I don't see where it saves us money. I don't see where it's a Band-Aid to, to stop cracking. In my neighborhood, I see a lot of the concrete pads or slabs still, um, deteriorating and falling apart, even when they had to crack seal. In my opinion, it is a waste of money. When it comes to apartments that are on the agenda for various issues, are the use of tax credits, especially the one on Tom Ginever, is HUD Section 8 being used in that project? It was said at the Planning and Zoning Commission that they are using federal subsidies on the Tom Ginever apartment complex, and that is very concerning. When it comes to Bills 7765 and 7766, a memorandum of understanding and a contract between the City of O'Fallon and the City of Cotterville, one is for dispatching services and one is for holding prisoners. In the past, Cotterville has employed seven to eight dispatchers about five, six years ago. They contracted then with the City of Lake St. Louis, left Lake St. Louis, went to, uh, St. Charles County Communications where they're at presently. I've asked for the past payments and the past contracts. I think we're way undermining and undercutting ourselves in terms of the expenses. The City of Cotterville's population is 7,000 and growing, with four new subdivisions being built as we speak. 8,000 residents will be in 2025, 9,000 residents in 2026. They have two large alcohol entertainment districts, uh, with, and venues that have arrests and DUI, uh, type issues. When it comes to replacement and maintenance of communication equipment, that's a lot of money. We spend millions of dollars and we're not charging them for that in this contract. When it comes to being the custodian of phone and, uh, radio recordings, again, we're not charging for that that I can see in this contract.
You have 15 seconds.
$70,000 for the communication with a 3% increase each year, 6,000 for warrant recalls, and $52,000 for, uh, the management system is just way undermining our, our needs. I think we're going to have to hire at least two new full-time employees.
Mr. Deenoff.
Those won't pay the cost of salary and benefits and pension.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Joining us, Speaker, we have, brings us to Ward Reports. Ward one.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanted to remind everyone about Heritage Freedom Fest coming up, uh, held up here at Ozzy Smith Ballpark. And, um, with that, there, I'm sure there's going to be tons of golf carts zipping around, so just keep an eye out for those. Um, and just a reminder on our fireworks ordinance, um, able to shoot them off third and fourth from noon to 11:00 PM. That's all I got.
Mr. Roth.
I don't got a lot to say tonight, but, uh, Councilman Wexler touched on what I would have touched on. Um, so that's all I got, Mayor.
Okay. Ward two.
Uh, nothing this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Boyer.
Uh, just, uh, today's Jun- Juneteenth. It's a national holiday here. Um, just a reminder of that. Uh, also, there's GM and concerts at Civic Park. That is, uh, I guess it's a breakdown, shakedown this coming Tuesday. And then, uh, next Thursday's Bomb Park, at the Bomb Pop Day at the Alligator Creek. So it's time to go out and experience O'Fallon. Uh, we are the number one city in the, in the state, so go out and experience all the cool things we have out there. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ward three.
Thank you, Mayor. I hear that Councilmember Bib has some very exciting news to share on Ward Report, so, uh, I don't have anything, I don't want to take any more of his time.
Mr. Bib.
Thank you, Mayor. That was a very long-winded way of taking up time. It was shocking to hear, and I wouldn't even share it if I didn't know that it was recorded, but while we don't ever hear anything positive from Mr. Deenoff here in the O'Fallon meetings, I do want to thank him for speaking so positively about O'Fallon at the St. Charles County meeting. He praised us a couple of meetings ago about the way that we collect a developmental fee from developers when we're approving subdivisions. So thank you, Arnie.
Thank you. Ward four. Ms. Taylor.
Yeah, so as the city council liaison for the Cultural Arts Commission, I had the pleasure of attending my first meeting this, earlier this month, and I was, as someone who has a deep appreciation for the arts and as a proud mom to a young lesbian herself, shout out to my daughter, Bella. I was really excited to hear about the upcoming renovations that they're planning in the gym upstairs where many of the performances are held. That space is going to be, looks like it's going to be turned into a true theater for our growing arts community. So, speaking of, you know, growth, our Theater Works program, I think, is thriving. We've had, I think, last year, sold-out shows in the summer production and the holiday shows. And last weekend, I was able to see, uh, Six, the musical, the team production, which also had sold-out shows, and for good reason. The talent they showcased on that stage was quite magnificent. Uh, we even have a personal connection to the performance. One of our very own staff members and IT's daughter was in the ensemble, and she did a fantastic job, so kudos to her. Uh, and the next production they're having is in September called The Curious Savage. So I just encourage everyone to mark their calendars and come out and support, you know, our talent, hometown talent. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
Ward five.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
Mr. Ragsdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I usually don't like to welcome my friends home from having trips overseas, but this one is quite unique. I really took heart to a lot of what the chaplain had to say tonight. One of my friends who's on radio, Chris Arps, and his wife Becky Arps, just got back today from an 11-day trip to Israel, and I'm trying so hard to, like, keep it together, but they were there while all the bombings were going on and everything. They were completely safe. Chris, in typical Chris fashion, he was more concerned about all of us back home because we were getting so many horrific news reports. Um, and he would do Facebook Live videos, and it sounded like they were in a very peaceful, serene, definite, definitely a vacation mode. So I just welcomed them home. Chris, um, said that there were several nights that they actually did have to get up in the middle of the night and go to bomb shelters, and it just makes me so thankful that we live in a place like the United States of America and O'Fallon, Missouri, that we don't face that. And when Chris landed on American soil today, um, in Philadelphia, he actually kneeled down on the ground and kissed the ground at the airport. So I just want to say, welcome home to Chris and Becky Arps. Thank you.
Thank you. Brings to our city administration report, Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the contributions of some staff members who are reaching milestone anniversaries. Police Sergeant Wade McElfrish has been with O'Fallon for 10 years. Capital assist, let me start over. Capital asset specialist Chris Romano has served for 20 years. And Police Lieutenant Joe Litzinger and media technician Dave Burkhart have been, have both been valued members of our team for 25 years. I'd like to thank all four of these individuals for being such an integral part of Team O'Fallon for all these years. Recently, U.S. News and World Report released its rankings of the top 250 places to live in the United States. It compared the cities based on value, desirability, job market, and quality of life. The wide-reaching report then weighed those rankings based on a survey U.S. News had previously conducted to determine what matters most to people. O'Fallon was named as the best place to live in Missouri and the 29th best place to live in the United States. It should be noted that there were three Missouri cities in the top 40, with St. Peter's taking number 35 and St. Charles at number 36. It is amazing to me that three cities in St. Charles County could be so highly ranked. On June 5th, I received notification from the International City-City Management Association that our very own Assistant City Administrator, Lenora Tozeraldez, had been selected as the recipient of the Assistant Excellence in Leadership Award in memory of Buford M. Watson, Jr., for 2025. While Lenora will officially receive the award during her attendance at the annual conference in October, tonight, we are proud to unofficially announce this extremely high honor to our great city of O'Fallon. To carry on just a bit, upon receiving this great news, the ICMA informed us that they had the second highest amount of award applications this year. So that included a high caliber of competition for this award, and our Lenora took it. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thanks, sir. Brings us to old business. Brings to Bill 7759. Motion for second reading by title only.
Cuskella.
Motion by Councilman Cuskella, second.
Bib.
Second by Councilman Bib. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Stephanie.
An ordinance providing for the approval and acceptance of the dedication of Dear Road Extension roadway improvements for maintenance by the City of O'Fallon, Missouri for Harvest Ed Hopewell, Plat 1B.
Thank you. Most final passage.
Cuskella.
Motion by Councilman Cuskella, second.
Bib.
Second by Councilman Bib. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
10 yes, 0 no. Bill 7759 pass becomes ordinance number?
7219.
7219. Thank you, Beth. Questions or comments on the committee commission reports? Seeing none. Questions or comments on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I've received questions from a couple of different council members regarding Resolutions A, B, and C, um, so I would ask that these three items be removed from the consent calendar and discussed individually.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Keown to put them on the new business at the end of new, new business. Do I have a second?
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any other questions or comments on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Motion by Keown, second.
Thank you.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Councilmembers, please cast your vote. 10 yes, 0 no. Consent calendar items one, two, and three has been passed. Brings us to new business. First is a public comment to consent or approval of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owners of League One Volleyball to allow a commercial recreation facility in a high-tech quarter district under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 6707 Keaton Corporate Parkway within the great city of O'Fallon, Missouri. Is there someone here to present this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sam Buffa, Carmody McDonald, 120 South Central Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, 63105.
Here today on behalf of League One Volleyball, looking for a conditional use permit for 6707 Keaton Corporate Parkway. League One Volleyball is a very interesting organization, has a lot of clubs, a lot of, bringing a lot of people to the region, bringing a lot of kids. It's a off-hours operation, so 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at night, when not all the businesses around there will be operating. You know, as staff mentioned in the pre-report, ample parking, great site, happy to answer any questions, but have Eric Schultz here from Loave, kind of wants to give you a background of what Loave is.
Thank you. Eric Schultz, 3706 Jacobson, Wonder Lake, Illinois, representing League One Volleyball. And we're excited to have identified the St. Louis region and now specifically O'Fallon as a potential home for our first volleyball club here in Missouri. We have, we're a young organization, but the largest of its kind. We have 75 clubs across the country in 87 locations, over 1,900 teams, 21,000 volleyball players, and 3,000 coaches that represent our youth organization. We also, just this year, started our inaugural pro season, was completed back a couple months ago with six sites. And just yesterday, actually, got our first franchise owner that included the Spurs Ownership Group, as well as David Blitzer, that had owned 20 pro franchises, including the Philadelphia 76ers. So the organization is moving in a very positive direction. We're really, really excited to potentially be here in O'Fallon, and thank you guys for the opportunity.
Hey, Eric.
Yes.
So this is just going to be youth volleyball?
That's where it's going to start, yeah. This would be, you know, now we're moving into a franchise model, so if we have an ownership group in the, in the St. Louis region that wants to bring pro volleyball here to St. Louis, we would be excited to have those conversations, but this is the first hurdle is to all of our youth clubs, any of our pro franchises, work alongside directly with a youth club in there in the same facility. Such a unique situation.
So what's the age group for that you're?
The club teams would operate from U-10 to U-18, which is basically 4th grade, to seniors in high school. We will have programming that will start as early as pre-K.
Okay. Questions for Sam or Eric? Lisa?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you tell me a little bit about the parking situation or the traffic? I mean, you said off-hours, like 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., but will this be on the weekends as well?
Yeah, there will be some weekend time, for sure. Keaton Parkway, if you're, I don't know how familiar you are with it, but it's on a, the building that we're at is at the end of the cul-de-sac there. There are roughly, I have to pull my numbers here, but-
200 parking spaces on site. So with being off-hours, I think we have ample parking for the youth.
And actually, they're going to have five courts to start with, and I think, depending on how things go, they'll add a sixth court.
The parking need, current, the current parking situation is, we have much more parking than we need for during the week, and we're probably right on point with what we would need for a few weekend events that we're going to be running.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Debbie?
So is this facility going to be used strictly for practice, or will there be league play there, tournaments? What are we looking?
There will be some tournaments, for sure. Those will happen usually between the months of January and April is where events would be taking place on the weekends. But practices primarily during the week. And there's obviously some downtimes during the year as well, fall, when high school volleyball or middle school volleyball is happening, it's a pretty quiet time in the facility. But big months are for us are from December to June.
Anybody else? Gentlemen, if you would, step aside. We have one speaker, Mr. Deenoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Arne C., AC Deenoff, City Public Advocate. I apologize, I was not able to make the public hearing of the past June Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I was in Jefferson City, where there was a special assembly, Special General Assembly session that was called by the governor, trying to fight some issues in our state capital. I have a couple, I have one issue with this business, but I have a lot of great opportunity that we can build upon this business. So the first issue is the traffic flow that was brought up. You're going to have a lot of people exiting all at one time, and so after these tournaments or matches are over. And so I would ask that the applicant look at traffic flow, move your traffic to the traffic light just one block north to give them the ability to make a safe left-hand turn and right-hand turn onto Missouri Highway K. And so I think that that would alleviate any traffic backups or any snarls or any issues with traffic. I think that we need to build upon sales taxes. Volleyball doesn't bring much sales tax to the city, but I see a lot of residual spinoffs from allowing this to have a conditional use permit. It's a generating, this will generate other businesses, sports and entertainment, and staying at accommodations such as bars and hotels. To Mr. McKean, our Director of Economic Development, I think we need to really hone in on building upon tourism, community amenities, entertainment, use of commerce, use of our restaurants, bars, and coffee houses, and staying here in O'Fallon using our hotels and motels. We need to take this opportunity and build upon generation of much-needed sales taxes to pay for our ever-growing needs of city services, such as police mainly, parks and recreation, streets, snow plowing, and I can go on and on. We need to make the maximum use and generation of our sales taxes, and also transient guest taxes at motel and hotels that are being built. We have four or five that are being built this year alone. And so I welcome this volleyball establishment to our city. I wish you would put in establishments such as food, such as selling volleyball equipment, generating sales tax, but I think we can build upon and really make this work. Thank you very much. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Go ahead and close a public comment. And if he watched the P&amp;Z, I did ask Eric to get with the hotels when he does have tournaments to make sure that those folks stay in the O'Fallon hotels, so I do appreciate it, and they will frequent those restaurants around there. And so I have no problem with seeing this go through, so. Any other questions for Eric or Sam? Brings to Bill 7760, motion for first reading by title only.
Boyer.
Motion by Councilman Boyer, second.
Thompson.
Second by Councilman Thompson. Councilman Boyer, please present the bill.
An ordinance granting conditional use permit to the owners of League One Volleyball to allow commercial recreation facility in an HTCD, high-tech corridor district, under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 6707 Keaton Corporate Parkway within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7761. Motion for first reading?
Bibb.
Motion by Councilman Bibb, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. Councilman Bibb, please present the bill.
Bill number 7761, an ordinance providing for the approval and acceptance of the dedication of streets and storm sewers excluding detention for maintenance by the City of O'Fallon, Missouri for the Streets of Caledonia, Platte 9, Phase 4.
Thank you. Brings Bill 7762. Motion for first reading?
Cascola.
Motion by Cascola, second.
Bibb.
Second by Councilman Bibb. Councilman Cascola, please present the bill.
Bill number 7762, an ordinance providing for the approval and acceptance of the dedication of streets and storm sewers excluding detention for maintenance by the City of O'Fallon, Missouri for the Streets of Caledonia, Platte 8, Phase 4A.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7763. Motion for first reading?
Keon.
Motion by Councilman Keon, second.
Bibb.
Second by Councilman Bibb. Councilman Keon, please present the bill.
Thank you. Bill number 7763, an ordinance amending Section 225.1.180 of the O'Fallon City Code relating to restrictions applicable to festival districts.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7764. Motion for first reading?
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
Second by Councilman Cook. Councilman Ragsdale, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance approving the record plat of Thornwood Apartments and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Thank you. Motion for second reading by title only?
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
Second by Councilman Cook. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Stephanie.
An ordinance approving the record plat of Thornwood Apartments and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Thank you. Motion final passage?
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
Second by Councilman Cook. Questions or comments on Bill 7764? Ms. Taylor.
I think it comes as no surprise that I oppose bringing more apartments to O'Fallon. It was something that was a key part of my campaign, and I heard in loud and clear from my constituents that they feel the same, but this is an administrative vote, and it complies with the ordinance, so I will hesitantly be voting yes.
Anybody else? Seeing none. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
10 yes, 0 no. 7764 pass becomes ordinance number?
7220.
7220. Thank you, Beth. Brings to Bill 7765. Motion for first reading?
Keon. Cascola.
Motion by Councilman Keon, second by Cascola. Councilman Keon, please present the bill.
Bill number 7765, an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding for public safety communication services with the City of Cottleville.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7766. Motion for first reading?
Cascola.
Motion by Cascola, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. Councilman Cascola, please present the bill.
Bill number 7766, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Cottleville for the processing and confinement of prisoners.
Thank you. Questions or comments on Resolution 619, 2025, D is in David? Seeing none. Motion second to introduce?
Keon.
Motion by Councilman Keon, second.
Cook.
Second by Councilman Cook. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Stephanie.
A resolution authorizing a supplemental agreement with Lockmueller Group Incorporated providing for the Parrot Creek Equalization Basin Improvements and the East Lift Station Decommissioning Project in an amount not to exceed $32,897.
Motion for approval?
Keon.
Motion by Councilman Keon, second. Second by Councilman Cook. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
10 yes, 0 no. Resolution D has been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution E? Seeing none. Motion second to introduce?
Keon.
Motion by Councilman Keon, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Stephanie.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of O'Fallon adopting the 2025 through 2030 St. Louis Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Motion final passage?
Keon.
Motion by Councilman Keon, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
10 yes, 0 no. Brings us to Resolution 619, 2025A. Motion for first reading? Or motion to, let's go back there. Questions or comments on Resolution A? Mr. Keon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the questions that I had received on this is, I think some of us here were under the impression that the crack seal was being performed by city staff rather than being farmed out. And I'm not suggesting that there's anything wrong with farming it out, particularly if this is something that we don't do, but I would ask, perhaps there's someone who can explain a little bit about this and to respond to the question, I assume this has been budgeted for 2025.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, sir. Thanks, Councilman Keon. City staff, especially public works, they have the ability to do many different things than they do from slab repair to partial depth to crack seal. But to take on this massive of a workload, they would really have to ramp up. And then now that, or they would just have to focus their crews, right, let's say, on crack seal, where we can utilize these funds, go out, have a contractor that specializes in this, get in there at one point, get it all done, let's say, for crack seal in two months, right, or resurfacing in a month versus them trying to get in there and getting pulled away, trying to get in there and getting pulled away. Or in case of asphalt resurfacing, they would need a lot more equipment, a lot more manpower. And then what do you do with all these guys in the wintertime as well? So it's, some things they do in-house, and they have the ability, certainly, but there's other things that are just much more efficient, like $4 million we do in concrete repair. It's much more efficient to get a company that specializes in that, let them get in there and knock it out and be done with it. So with all three of these, it's much more efficient to use these contractors to get the work done.
And this is a budgeted amount?
Yes, sir. We actually were able, on most of these, the bids were good enough that we were actually able to increase the quantities and stay within the budget amount.
Yeah, not to put you on the spot, but can you give us some indication of scale? I know it's, we're talking about quite a bit of roads, and two, since the question has been posed, I know the answer to this, but everyone may not. Can you elaborate a little bit on why the crack seal program makes our streets last longer so that we get more value out of them?
Yes, sir. Great question. So it's a preservation technique, right? So what we're trying to do is seal those joints in the concrete streets, prevent that water from getting down in there, prevent that water from getting underneath our pavement, which is harmful, getting rocks in there and other things. So we're trying to preserve those joints and keep that concrete pavement and asphalt lasting longer.
And just again, if you can give some idea of quantification, how many, I don't know, lane miles or any indication of how much we're talking about, because, you know, half a million dollars is a lot of money, but I suspect it's a very large amount of crack seal.
Yeah, so for the crack seal, we have a five-year rotation, so 700 lane miles, break it up into wards, you know, divide it by five, and yeah, you get 140, so, which Mike probably knew that. But yeah, so we do a ward each year, and we rotate around through the city. With the crack seal builders, also, we've got our path resurfacing, we're going to be included in that project. So this was the first year that was budgeted, so we're looking forward to getting some path down at the south end of Highway K resurfaced. And then there's also some resurfacing on one of, with the parks, parking lots, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Do I need a motion to introduce now?
Yes.
Motion to introduce Resolution A.
Keon.
Motion by Councilman Keon, do I have a second?
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stephanie?
A resolution authorizing an agreement with Road Gold Incorporated providing for the 2025 crack seal program in an amount not to exceed $414,994.
Motion second to approve?
Keon.
Motion by Keon, second.
Cascola.
Second by Cascola. This is a roll call?
It'll be roll calls.
Roll call.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth? Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Bibb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Yes.
Councilmember Wexler?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook? Yes. Councilmember Cascola?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Kuhn?
Yes.
10 yes votes. Resolution A has been approved. Questions or comments on Resolution B? Mr. Kuhn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similar questions with all three of these, so the micro-surfacing contractors, the asphalt preventative maintenance program, is this where they go and they seal the top of it with the black top sealer? And again, how many roads are we talking about for this amount of money?
Yeah, great question. So, this is a very thin resurfacing. It's intended to preserve that pavement and make it last numerous years longer before you either have to go in and do a full two-inch, let's say, milling resurfacing or reconstruction, so. And with that, I believe we are completing 14 roadway segments in the Forest Park area, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Roth?
I kind of want to know, on B, it's asphalt preventive maintenance program, and on C, it's asphalt program. What's the difference? And why can't one company do that?
That's a great question, and really, they're both preventive maintenance, right? Micro-surfacing, crack seal, those are, you kind of consider those more maintenance, where a resurfacing, although, yes, you're not totally reconstructing the roadway, you are milling off and putting, you know, a nice two-inch layer back on it, so it rides and gives the feel of a new roadway, so.
How long is all this supposed, these repairs supposed to last?
Usually, a resurfacing lasts about 10 to 12 years. A micro-surfacing might be more of a five or six years before you have to do additional work on it, so.
All right. I'm just not a big fan of multiple contractors working on the same thing. The time I spent with the county, I had to deal with that a lot, excuse me, and nothing really good comes out, because one company will want this, or they want more money for extra stuff, or whatever. I just don't see why one company can't do the same thing.
These aren't the same streets. They're totally different streets that you're doing.
They're totally different streets, and micro-surfacing's more of a specialty work, so you don't have as many contractors that do that. I completely agree with you. It's more for us to manage, too, versus having multiple contractors, but by getting these contracts and having a straight contract with them, then we don't get that extra markup for a general having to manage a sub. So, we do that to try and save a little money, but it, I agree with you, it puts more work on staff.
Anybody else? Seeing none.